Thursday, June the 27th, 7:00 PM. I would like to start with our location by Pastor Gordon Nigga at the church of Christ.
Father God, we're so grateful as we've gotten to your very presence by your Holy Spirit. Thankful that we stand and honor and call you Father, and welcome you to our children. Father, we just want to lift up this special prayer to you this night, asking for your guidance, for wisdom, for instruction to the city council and all the city officials. Father, we're thankful that there are many women who have taken up the mantle of service and serving the community. Father, we're so thankful for this community. We're thankful that we can be a part of it. We ask a blessing from this meeting tonight. We ask that indeed, spirits will be indeed humble, and spirits will indeed be proactive in forthcoming, as we have an opportunity to listen to everyone here and to these many women who are guided and that's why we're thankful for them here. Just ask a special blessing from her as she conducts this business, as she continues forward to see this city progress in all its glory, in Jesus' name.
At this time of the hour, we have Councilman Miller, Councilman Morones, Councilwoman Castillo, and Councilwoman Rodriguez. Now, will everyone please stand for the congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I want to take that side. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, do we have any citizens' comments? Okay, before we go on, I'd like to read a letter that we received. Subscribe, and it reads, "Dear friends, customers, volunteers, and donors to the South Texas Resource and Assistance Center Incorporated, AKA STRACK. It has come a time when we no longer continue to operate the community thrift store, function of our nonprofit organization 501(c)(3). It is with much reluctance and sadness we must discontinue this fundraising operation of STRACK. Over the years, we have tried many avenues to help raise funds to maintain the operating expenses, which includes taxes, insurance, utilities, building maintenance, and upkeep. The area of extreme hardship is the upkeep of the building and the property it sits on. Keeping up with the disposal of excess items, and especially donated items that are not suitable for use, has become impossible to keep up with. Although the city has placed a no dumping sign in front of STRACK, individuals continue to dump unusable items, and even in some instances, ordinary household garbage in the front yard of STRACK. As founder and executive director of STRACK, as well as owner of the property, I have decided I no longer wish to continue the thrift store operation. As you know, we received little to no outside financial support and past assistance from the local government, all but dried up three years ago. Covering the expense to keeping STRACK clean has rested solely on my 81-year-old husband's and my shoulders for many years. At this point in time, we can no longer physically or financially handle this burden. The desire is to cease accepting and/or receiving any thrift store donations effective Monday, July 15, 2013. Inventory of clothing and other donated household items will be depleted through significant discount sales to customers. Any donated items remaining on the premises as of September 15, 2013, will be donated to another nonprofit organizations that requests such items. Beginning October 1, 2013, STRACK will be trying out, as of yet to be decided, fundraising activities that won't place an undue burden on the property owners, the staff, and volunteers of the organization. The STRACK emergency food pantry, prescription assistance, and document programs will continue to operate as long as financially feasible. On behalf of STRACK, I wish to express our sincere appreciation to all those who have either donated items or monies, or volunteered their time to help the thrift store program exist for the last eight years. Rest assured, we will continue to help those in need for as long as we can, and welcome suggestions on fundraising activities that better suit our organization, given the limited physical and financial capabilities. Teresa Hennihosa, STRACK founder and executive director. Ms. Hennihosa, I would like to stand and applaud you for all that you've done for the community. Did you want to say anything with any further?
I mean, we gave it our best, and we're going to try, you know, but we just can't handle that far.
And I know that you have spent, you and your husband, over, I believe, or not more, just calculated, over a hundred thousand of your own money to keep that open. And a lot of people don't know that, but it's because you bring it out from your heart, and we appreciate that. Now, we're going to go on to item one, where I'm going to open the public hearing. The time is 7:07.
Yes, ma'am. This is a notice of public hearing to the public, to the city council, to staff, that this public hearing is being held today at 7:00 to gather citizens' input on volunteer annexation of the 15,466 acres of land out of the site in the Rosetta and the Grand, Act strike number one in Wilson County. In a deed of record in volume 1762, the official of the records in Wilson County, also known as the McCoys property, to include the approximate 24.4 acres of highway at station marker 532 plus 48.3, which is existing city limit sign, to highway station marker 488 plus 68.1 of county road 330, which is a total of 39.9 acres of annexation.
Do you have any questions, ma'am? Any public comments, ma'am?
My name is Phil Hutchinson. The McCoys buildings are fine, and of course, we initiated that annexation, so I just wanted to make myself available if there were any questions.
Does anyone have a question, councilman?
No, I just wanted to acknowledge the Saginaw.
There is no questions, obviously.
Thank you, sir, for being with us.
Happy to do.
Okay, the first question, so I hereby close the public hearing. Time is 7:09. Now, we're going to go on to full business, to eight, consideration and action to approve the minutes from June 13, 2013. Do I can have a motion on that?
I just have one correction, Madam Mayor. On item three, I see an need to approve resolution on Agenda 21, State Citizens' Comment, Frank Gonzalez and Councilwoman Sherri Castillo. This was a legal motion that had been seconded. Councilwoman Castillo's comments were part of the discussion. I think we set that precedent, we allow discussion to be considered citizens' comment. So I would suggest we strike from under citizens' comment Fred Gonzalez and strike and Councilwoman Castillo.
Legal counsel, is that correct?
I think it is. The points made is this is a motion, this is a discussion by council, by council, of the council, and I think that's the way the motion is handed. If I'm understanding this, you have a comment.
Is this our whose rule this is?
I'm sorry?
What ruling is this from?
I hear your question.
What rule?
This is basically rather tools of order. In other words, what's this, a motion, and a second, and there's a discussion on the matter, and my recollection of what happened was, you had a comment to make, which you were within your rights to do, and commented on the motion, but ordinarily, it wouldn't be citizens' comments, it would be just your comments of the councilperson commenting on the motion.
And the citizen comment would also be struck out?
No, I mean, if some citizen wanted to make a comment, it's something entitled.
Well, I'm not suggesting we strike the citizens' comment, just to strike and Councilwoman Castillo in that statement.
I thought I heard you say also Mr. Gonzalez.
No, I did not. It was specifically the, you as a voting member of the council were making comments that was a discussion of Mr. Gonzalez, currently within his rights to speak at that, and should be reflected in the minute.
Okay, would that change? Can I have a motion?
So motion.
May I have a second, please?
One second.
Motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Rodriguez, all in favor?
I want to give a vote for the com- I have a minute.
Okay, motion passes. Please, one. All of those?
I wasn't here when it went off.
Sherri, you want to share those things?
Yes, ma'am, I will also come out in the next minute on time line.
Okay, now let's go on to item three. Presentation update A, financial update, April 2013, detailed listing, fund balances by law basis.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. Here again, coming faster and faster, I swear. You had in your packet the April 2013 budget report. We're at this point for, if we were exactly on spending money exactly as we've budgeted, we would be at 58.33. So currently, both funds remain well below the water and sewer fund and the general fund well below 58% of the way out of the expenses. As always, we have a general fund expenditures, excuse me, revenues total $2,804,100. This includes 94.78% of your minimum property tax collection. Again, March, nearly like 8,555. Your major collection month, again, is nobody, I would mention that before, so now we're just kind of down very little bit left till the end of the year. So the metrics for the month are 108,515, which is an increase of 16,847, or 18.38% as compared to last year. And actually, every month has been increasing at all times. Franchise fees, like at the end, Brazil was monthly, and it was 47,522. General fund expenditures total $1,865,810, which is 49.48% of the budget, again, 58.33 if we weren't spending exactly as we believe, so we're holding low. The Wilson County EMS, they get paid in one time, so that line-up had been zero until this point, so now it shows that they receive the time around. Again, very little expenses in court, police, all salary benefits. Street departments still have one position vacant, so it is slightly under budget due to the vacancy. Parks and work department, we're one, again, has vacancies, so their salary line-up is extremely low, and we'll start seeing a little bit more expenses coming with May and June, based on the following seven months. So what we pulled is, at this point, 36.6% spent, and again, that, this is an April report, so you'll start seeing increase of expenditure there, which is mostly the salaries. And they did, we did work on the sand. I'm not sure, I don't understand how the pool works, I haven't been out there, but it's a filtering system, it's a lot of sand, so that was replaced and cleaned, so that line-up was up. And water sewer, general fund, any questions from the general fund, anybody have anything? Pretty slim this month, it's really very slim. Water and sewer, financing sources total 785,695. Water residential and commercial total 491,902 of that amount. Just a slight decrease of 3,814 compared to the period last year. April residential billing comparisons last year is still falling at the same, we've been about 15,000 difference from last year in total. It's still from October of the previous year. The penalties, for this time, we have penalties calculated on the 10th, as always, 437 customers out of original 2,503 that all of the party. Cut-off penalties were calculated on the 20th, and out of the 437, we have 111 that we see cut-off doses. Pretty good, appreciated. Utility fund expenditures $712,610, in a budget of only 43.6% spent. We're working on a budget amendment for water sewer, we've talked about this several times, and we had a budget workshop, and the main focus is water and sewer. We are going to be splitting out. Right now, your budget is all one department, it's going to be split out into administration department, a water and sewer departments. Helps in seeing costs for the actual individual areas. They have had very little expenditures in the month of April, other than their chemicals and sewer disposal fee and electricity. Debt service, debt service fund is the other portion of property tax INS, total collected in fiscal property tax for the year, 408,626. Month of, no, again, November, historical, April collections only 9,518. And that's kind of also something, that's your large amount of money, that money's, we have to watch that cash flow and help pay for expenses through the remaining year, sales tax to get other large cash flows, so. Debt service payments are in March and September for your principal, so we'll be seeing some larger payments coming in the August.
Any questions?
That was someone like a broken record, it was something the same response. And then, we also have in, in your packet, the fund balance listing that we've been including. And this fund balance, this has actually updated with the ending, excuse me, beginning fund balances have the audited numbers now, related concerning this, un-audited now, we're changing the auditive. And then, this time, I included, which is actually number B, I jumped, we really meant for it to be up there, some information on sales tax and reports, just to help, just visual, to see your sales tax. Yeah, it's really nice to see the increase in sales tax, that's going to help the city a lot.
Any questions?
One question. You said if we're at, I think our was 58% based on the number of months, 58.33. When I look at sales tax, it shows us at 57.4% of what was budgeted. Are we on target to meet that budget amount, even though that's off just a little bit?
We're actually over target.
I'm looking on the second page of the sales tax report. When we look at the second column, it talks about current percentage of budget collected. The total says 57.4%. That's less than 58.33.
I have to go back and calculate that percentage. Why that shows that question? I mean... With my sales tax report, based on the budget, I don't have that page on there. I have to go back and calculate it to see.
Yeah, I mean...
But we are, my other, there's another page that I don't have included on here, because it's just very basic information, it shows we are all actually over the budget.
Okay, that was my only concern in the number, is it?
Yeah, I have to go back and calculate it.
If you would let me know, I'd appreciate it.
Anyone else have any questions?
Got a comment if I can there.
Okay.
I appreciate Laura's work on your new business that's coming up, the consideration and action to approve work in 2013, 305, and maybe the 2012, 2013 budget. After discussion with the council and some comments made of what we're looking at, trying to accomplish this year as far as maintenance and some repairs, I'd like to see you table that item for a future date, possibly two weeks later. The only reason I bring those up is that I can excuse Ms. Laura and let her go home, if we're not going to move on that item.
Madam Mayor, I can, Colonel, I'll make the motion to table Agenda I, enforcing.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Rodriguez. Okay, a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Rodriguez. More she cares. Okay, then we're going to go on to, she gives us a second. Item C, which is the update on Floristville Park Foundation. Andy, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Miller?
I want to take the liberty of going first.
You do.
Major City Council, residents of Wilson County and Floristville. I am Doug Jones, and I'm currently the president of the Parks Foundation. I put together an update for the city council, but for you folks, it's all simple. I'd like to be the introduction to it and give you some background. The Floristville Park Foundation discovered on June 3 this year that the Internal Revenue Service had revoked the foundation's 501(c)(3) and status. On June 12, 2013, Mr. Chris Hug of the Law Office of Mr. Lou Rosenberg received correspondence from Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts, Mr. James Moore, which stated that the foundation had forfeited its corporate privileges October 7, 2011, for failure to satisfy franchise tax requirements. He also stated, as notified by the Texas State Secretary of State, that our foundation had its registration corrupted February 10, 2012, and its right to transact business was involuntarily ended. This saga started for our foundation when our treasurer and myself met with the city comptroller in January, at which time Laura gave us a collection item for $1,431, so a collection agent had been hired by the comptroller to collect past due franchise taxes. When this occurred, I sent an email to the mayor, city manager, and Mr. Rosenberg, asked for a 9-1 meeting. The city secretary scheduled us on that Friday the 7th, and we spent some time, and then Mr. Rosenberg volunteered some time with me the following week. We've gone through all the documentations from the initial incorporation in 2010 to present. The IRS was sending their wrappers to the civic center. The civic center doesn't have a postbox, so the forms that were required by the foundation were never sent to the IRS, and nobody, to include the city manager, who is also our only registered agent with the state of Texas and with the IRS, Mr. Rosenberg, who was part of the original paperwork with the power of attorney. We've got no information from them. We never received the documents that the state comptroller has stated that in 2011 and 2012 was received. I will tell you, though, that between Mr. Hug and Mr. Rosenberg and his staff, we have a plan. It's called our startover plan. We got to start from square one and file all the paperwork once more. This time, because of lessons learned, we know the pitfalls of our predecessors. We know it has to be filed, what format it has to be filed, and all of the dead trees that we're going to have to do paperwork with to get the foundation back in good standing. And I'm sure that the next agenda item is, what I just raised, is going to have some consequences for y'all's consideration. I would also like to point out that there are but one, that's got English wrong, there are no other records except one document that in December, as the council appointed me as a director, that Andy Jocelyn gave me. There's no other records that the city has anywhere dealing with the Parks Foundation. We will make an attempt as we go forward. I asked Sherri at that meeting that we had on that Friday, do I need to buy a computer by USB hard drive and keep our data and make it available to the city, so that in the future, we don't have to go through these pitfalls of what the previous board had to go through. As a request, if you know who, after Steve Trevino and his board, who were the secretary, who was the vice president, who was the treasurer, please have them contact me, or Mr. Jocelyn, or somebody, if they have any records. Any records at all, we'd love to get. Questions from the council?
I have some questions. I asked the city manager to kind of bring us up to speed too on what he had in records of time, do you have anything to add?
No, Councilman, he's all pretty much summarized the situation. Soon as he made, be aware of the issue, I sent an email notice to all the council members in regards to what was occurring. Mr. Jones has been instrumental in bringing everybody together to try to record by the situation. There was a turnover in boards during that timeframe, and many board members involved, and the record keeping, like we said, wasn't one of the best issues taken. The major thing that was, that had occurred was that the correspondence was going to the center, and the center has no post about the box, it does not receive everything, to include the fire department and any other organization has a box here that's in, so we talked about how are we going to see the course by months, how is Mr. Jones and his board going to get the correspondence. We enlisted legal in regards to the paperwork that's required, and I think he may have some information on how that's going to proceed. Mr. Jones, members of the council and a mayor, I think Mr. Jones has summarized that the short burden is, I have a colleague who's a registered lobbyist, who is very well logged, and I enlisted his support to go back there and figure out how they could assess this attack, and they have no records of us. records on us. And I'm going to try to explain to you how that happens. We've got an open record request, and we have the response, they have no records on us, but they assessed the fourteen hundred dollar bill. So that's the point we're at, and we want to figure out how you do that, and importantly, how you back it out. We can get that backed out, we can do a lot of things to get him done thoroughly. That's where we're at.
Do we have a timeline where...
I expect to hear back on it this next week. Chuck is usually very, very quick on responding to me. He was raised by Bob Loach, uh, had Bob Loach's knees, and holds that agency in and out. If anybody can do it, Chuck can get it done. It turned out, kind of ironically, just anecdote, and when I called him, he was returning from a trip to North Carolina, and he said he had three commercial accounts with the same incident. And so apparently this is not an acceptable circumstance, this happens in other contexts. So I said, Chuck, here's the fourth one. I need an answer right away.
And I think the second question that relates to timeline is to reestablish their, for lack of a better word, credibility with the Secretary of State's office and their tax exempt status. Do we have an idea of what that is going to take in, in terms of time and in terms of expense?
If I can get Chuck to do what he's promised to do, which is to work on it next week, it takes a simple letter from the comptroller's office to the Secretary of State's office saying, the matter either is in an error or you're reinstated. It can be done in a couple different ways. I'm looking to get that done next week, if that's at all physically possible. Once we're reinstated, we'll become a corporation again. Once we become a corporation again, then we do the 501(c)(3) again. I'm looking to have that done in a couple weeks, and then we've got a timeline between us to follow through on that. You asked your second question.
Uh, costing a lot.
Okay. When I was involved in this at a barrier stage, I paid, and I've forgotten about this until Mr. Jones made me look at my records. I had paid the fee for the IRS, for the 501(c)(3) filing fee out of our office began with, and I had built for two months, and the rest of the work I'd done pro bono, and I intend to do the rest of the work pro bono. I netted out of this matter a minus of about three hundred dollars, but that's not here nor there, the idea of it parts by business and running.
Okay.
And next, if I may, on your, your timeline, the plan that Chris put together when we were together in your office, or, uh, he said that the first step would take about six weeks. I became so frustrated with the easy form for the franchise tax, I fired an email to Mr. Hug and said, I can't do it. I don't know how to get a start date, I don't know how to get an end date, because all the paperwork showed that the foundation was established the thirtieth of June. Well, the reporting date for that year was in May. Well, I indeed paid these. Do you figure out what your start date is if it's after your recording date? And every time I would enter that form to put the correct dates in, it would reject it. He's going to do that, or has been trying to do that. Once that comes back, uh, there's a other paperwork that has to go, and I'm going to try to relieve the burden on the city manager. And I have told him in my Friday meeting that I will accept the responsibilities of being the registered agent for the foundation. That requires a 401, 401A, a 402, and a 403, change, acceptance, resignation paperwork, and give them my address. And anytime in the future, until I'm either removed or retired, or the board puts me under the funding service, then we'll have a new registered agent. But Andy's got enough to do, and I promised them that we would do what we needed to do. Like I said, I was serious about getting an English hard drive for the city secretary so that we have a place that we can square. Once all those actions take place, then we go back, hit the ten-twenty-three, uh, completed. We found some errors in there that could possibly cause some culpability with the IRS folks as to why it never made it to the right people. When it comes back, then we have to file for an exemption as a public charity to the state comptroller to get our exemption. Once that's done, we won't file any reports. But we did, we still have to file nine names of a public charity. So basically, six weeks for the first hurdle, and perhaps a month or two after that. But what's going on in Washington with the IRS, who knows?
Well, clearly, uh, Mr. Rosenberg's solution, if it's possible, would be the preferable to the paperwork. Uh, but it does bring up some other interesting questions about the Parks Foundation and some challenges that we may or may not face, and, and council, I'm going to lean to you on this first one. Uh, we have been collecting a parks fee. Uh, for some time now, according to...
It's October the first, twenty-eleven. You're talking about the water.
Yeah. And that parks fee is to be, for lack of a better words, administered by this Parks Foundation. Yeah, or concurrents. Do we have, are we going to face any challenges for that collection over this time period?
No. Because I was not thinking as part of the time they...
Okay.
I think Laura would agree.
Yeah, I think she's...
Okay, just one of those hiccups that I didn't want to have to suddenly bite. And then the next question, and, and this is maybe asking the question or, or closing the door after the horse is escaped. You say there are no records. From what I understand, a significant amount of money is funneled through the Parks Foundation. I'm concerned over that.
According to the bank segment for Wells Fargo, there's only been for the last two and a half years, forty-three hundred dollars. The city made a donation of seven thousand dollars, uh, early January of two thousand and eleven. The, the checkbook shows that the foundation gave a three thousand dollar factor, a thirty-eight dollar bill for the, uh, box of checks. And again, whoever the secretary or treasurer was, we don't have the checks, and it's likely to have them. Now, there was additional amount of money that was sent to the city into the city pool cash account, and then from, uh, back to the foundation's Wells Fargo account is twenty-two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollar deposit. There's been no activity on it, except that the last bank segment of twenty-twelve showed five dollars less than the previous December statement, and I have no account for where that five dollars came from.
So we have some money that's been going through this?
I'm sorry?
Some money's been going through this account since it's been forfeited?
No.
No.
We come back to your statement. You said the city gave the Parks Foundation seven thousand dollars.
Yes.
Then the Parks Foundation gave the city back thirty-eight hundred dollars?
It's about three thousand. I have to give my plug.
What was that for?
If you look back in the two thousand and ten timeframe, there was a holiday extravaganza. There was an article that Mr. Gibbs sent me the link to where it showed the previous foundation president, Mr. Stephen Trevino, with a large check for four thousand dollars. I think that the profit sprung, because in that article it mentioned that Mayor Tohada said that they had profit in nearly sixteen thousand dollars, of which a check went to the Girl Scouts for eleven thousand, four thousand supposedly was coming to the Parks Foundation. So I think that in the initial account set up for the Parks Foundation that we currently have, seven thousand dollars was the oversight and returned to the city pool cash fund, whatever that money was. And then there were some other bills that I guess that came through, we do, again. The only thing I should tell you is that from the state, Mr. Wells Fargo, I can't believe the dates and the amounts and where the money came and where it went.
Well, I had heard, I don't know, I had heard that for that money, they had turned around and went ahead and re-booked the next extravaganza, so they pulled that money from the Parks Foundation. Is that true, Mr. Johnson, or you know, or you're aware of it?
I'm not aware of that, sir. That was the Parks Foundation, unfortunately. The library's in what, the, uh, holiday extravaganza?
And to me, it's kind of funny that there's no record, and, uh, to me, I had heard, well, one of the, one of the members of the Parks Foundation had told me that that money, as soon as they pulled it in, they pulled it out. And there was a prior marriage, so we can just go from there. So, uh, I, I think there's more of the story that they know where that money, and people know what, what went on, what didn't go on, but, uh, I don't know how we can go to it. If they gave more minutes or more, where that money went, but that money did, was pulled out because one of the members had told me that this parent came by and said, let me have this money, and they pulled it out at that day, but we can look into more into that.
Well, I don't have it in my book, but I will also tell you that again, because Mr. Gibbs provided me with the, the website, uh, there was a request by the Wilson County News for documents to be provided that went all the way to, I believe, the Attorney General to where the documents were finally produced for not only the extravaganza in two thousand and ten to the two thousand and eleven, but the foundation checkbook that I have, or the actual statements that I have, didn't start until January of eleven. And there's no money in there. Like I said, there's seven thousand dollars initial, the, the cost of the checks, money was given back to the pool cash. There was one other bill that came in, but I couldn't find my spreadsheet that I provided to with Chris. But there's no money above that forty-three hundred dollars. I mean, it has been stagnant. And in fact, Wells Fargo even stopped charging the eight dollar per month service fee, and it's been stagnant until we, I don't think she's deposited yet. The only other money that I know today is we got fourteen hundred dollars on market days when we did the survey for the park on market day after we joined the chain.
So what is the amount of money we have in that Parks Foundation?
Forty-three hundred dollars.
Well, that is the other, other piece of, of dollars that could be administered by the Parks Foundation, which is the, the Parks Rec Fee Fund, and, uh, that's, what's the balance in that fund?
Laura, let me do that one. I can explain that. Mr. Miller, that money is public funds. The Recreation Parks Department of the city, with our concerns, would come to Mr. Jocelyn with a budget amendment, then would come to the city council to do any expenditures that money. The original thought, again, Mr. Rosenberg, if I say anything wrong, jump out and whip me with a whip. The original purpose was to have a source of matching funds so as to go out and get other grant money. Some cases, if you've got twenty percent to give people, they'll give you eighty percent. So that money, we can't spend it. It has to go through Mr. Jocelyn from the Parks Department, the city employee, Mr. Alex Trevino is the supervisor. He would have to come to the city manager, do the budget amendment, present it to you folks, you folks would make the budget change, and away the money would go.
Theoretically, it'd be in the minimum.
It has to be. We cannot spend it.
Okay.
It's not our money, it's taxpayer money. And if you...
It's knee reference, that's city ordinance, too, anyway.
Are there any council checks, sorry, what?
Go ahead.
Are there any, uh, council checks or, or anything of that sort that would, uh, match those, those numbers?
Yes. There was probably set copies that our treasurer and I had spent time over with the Wells Fargo manager, and I think, uh, Mayor, or, it helped set up to get her acknowledged over there so that we can get the signatures or whatever again. We don't have the checks. We don't know who the previous treasurer was.
I can tell you who the previous treasurer was. In my research. Her name was Becky Silva, and she works at the farm dealer. I don't know if she still works there, but she was, I think, the only one they ever had, that secretary trade.
Well, I'm certain as we go through this correction, or as you call it, your step-by-step plan, uh, we will also identify, um, accounting processes so that those kinds of financial reports come back to the council and that we have the record keeping appropriate. As a corporation of the city of Forestville, I'm certain the city manager will ensure that we don't have, uh, challenges to missing meeting minutes or reports or appointments and that sort of thing in the future. And I'm looking forward to, uh, a report from our counselor as to his progress on this, and then what next steps will need to be taken to get the Parks Foundation reinstated. I, I would ask you to remind everybody what the, the mission of the Forestville Parks Foundation?
The mission of the Parks Foundation, as the corporation document said, is to reduce the financial burden on the city's, uh, budget plan by enhancing the facilities and increasing the awareness of the well-being of the population and the residents of the city. To me, that means like what we did when we repainted the facility at the Root Park Golf Field. We were in the process of trying to take Lou's suggestion at the very first meeting when he was our shepherd and told us at the very beginning in January about Pecan Park. We want to renovate, uh, Pecan Park. We would like to start a reforestation process. We'd like to get somebody coming in with an irrigation process. And we would love to, in the Air Force, we call them an accident TP four party. Like the accident TP four party, the restaurants, and get started, but we can't do that without, as you guys have heard me say, I need your money. Well, right now, I can't ask for any money until we get the paperwork and the Secretary of State allows us to continue transactivity. Any and everything that we do is to support, and in some places, ameliorate the burden for those six guys that work in the Parks Department. I'd like to see the, the facility, bathhouse at the pool, accident TP four party. But you're talking about deep pockets and lots of money.
I would encourage you and our city staff in the budget process that we're going through, uh, one of the things that we've talked about today was setting some capital repair and replacement projects over the next three to five years to begin to incorporate some of those priorities of the Parks Foundation, who would work hand-in-hand with our Parks Department to get those included and in our budgeting process for the coming year.
Well, that's another piece of information for not only the council, but for the residents. Uh, Mr. Jocelyn and I attended a Sarah Watership for Wilson County meeting this past week. And I don't even remember Jeff's last name, but I've got his business card. He's at SRS Corporation out of Austin. He's interested in the North Press. He's interested in, I'm sorry, Mr. McCoy's rep, McCoy has walked out, but I understand that McCoy's is looking to donate some land over by the Seguin Ranch to the city. Uh, Jeff was saying that his job in life with the company that he works for is to find the grant money so as to do things for Parks. So the more that I can network with people and find the belly butts, I don't mind getting face-to-face and belt buckle to belt buckle with anybody and plead the case for this city and try to get the Parks up to speed, because, you know, you guys only get so much money. And without money, it's real. I'm told that, uh, Mr. Butts himself gave a quarter million dollars to Sam Martin. I'd like to pursue that to figure out how I can touch base with that fellow side of him and not his corporation, A G B.
We're getting, uh, every citizen in the city is receiving a dollar ticket out from their, from, uh, to go to the Parks Foundation, correct? For the Parks?
To the Parks, yeah.
To the Parks.
An account just specifically for, you know, can hold on spend, you know, collaboration with the Parks Foundation, the city, and then we, and we, mansion, and we...
What does that do with what, what's going on right now with the forfeiture of the...
Nothing. It's, it is just another fund, just like your hotel, Motocross, actually a fund number four sixty, excuse me, four sixty, recreational fee.
It's not the interest rate.
In fact, if Mr. Trevino needed to, to use that money, like I said earlier, he would bring a budget change to Mr. Jocelyn, who would do a budget amendment, present it to council, you guys would vote on it and go with it. Because he does have an operational budget, but again, that's part of the purposes that the foundation was set up, is to ameliorate those financial burdens on the city. Any questions from the area?
Yes, ma'am.
Doug, may I ask currently, how many signs are required on the account? Is it one or two?
I'll say two.
I would all say two, but without a checkbook, I haven't gone over there and signed anything else.
I would hope it's two because that gives you an extra...
Right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Doug, I think you're doing a good job, a great job. I would appreciate it.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. Don't forget to get a seven. I told you guys in April when I updated you, thank God, California, the folks at your firm, because you got some flying busters that are working hard for you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Okay, next we're going to have, I wonder where you have this. Item 3D, the Wilson County Patriots' check presentation to the Forestville Parks Foundation. Ms. Jones?
Mayor City Council, residents, you're absolutely correct. Two weekends ago, the Wilson County Patriots sponsored, along with residents, non-residents, a fundraiser at Finders Keepers. We did a bake sale, we did a donation jar, and we also did a flea market. We collected so far $1,030 for the Parks Foundation. When this came to light, originally, I was here to do a check presentation to them. And now with these concerns, although the checks are made out to the Forestville Parks Foundation, there is a concern regarding the legitimacy and the status of the account and what we can do that will be in okay as far as being good watchkeepers of everybody's money that's contributed. We certainly don't want to go down a path that happened before. And I'll probably have to go to the legal counsel. I did not bring them with me because I knew there was going to be some concerns. The sad thing is, we were so joyful about what we've done and so happy. And now there's this cloud.